Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Nashville Town Council. For the record, today is Tuesday, October 2, 2018, and it is 7:00 PM. The first item on the business we have tonight is approval minutes, of which we've got two sections, Tuesday, September, four regular meetings, and Tuesday, September 18, called Meeting Minutes. Does Chair here most of the minutes be approved, they're written, or are there corrections?
Second.
It's been moved to second, the minutes be approved. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Accordingly, the minutes are approved. Okay, we have one person who's signed up for public comments, Mr. Chris Sandy, who just made a running flight by here. Mr. Sandy? You come up here, please.
Yes, sir.
Have three minutes.
(laughing).
Would you turn the whole thing around?
The whole thing around?
Turn the whole thing around. There you go. There you go. Thank you.
All right, I'm Chris Sandy. I own and bought a building here on the corner of 720 South Body Street, and I'm opening contractor wholesale supply, wholesale building materials and all that sort of thing. And a pretty neat thing, I'm trying to breathe life back into that end of town, which is the beginning of Nashville. That's where Nashville began, and I think a good place to start is at the beginning. And so, working over there and putting a lot of money and efforts into it, and trying to bring jobs in. I got increased traffic there, and I request that if possibility, we can get a couple more streetlights on maybe railroad and Body Street, because it's pretty dark there at night. And I got people coming in that, you know, the time chain's going to really affect that, and I'm there a lot of hours. And so, just asking that, and also possibility, looking at the sidewalks to make them safer and cleaner and all that, because I'm, like I said, I'm dressing up that building and trying to make it, bring some life into it, and add some stimulus at the beginning of Nashville. And so, that's my two cents.
So you want, uh, streetlights, overhead lights?
That's right.
And like, improve sidewalks?
That's right.
Yeah, we'd work on that.
I appreciate that, because, uh...
That's not, that's not a real request. Reason we haven't got them over there to this point, because there's been no need for them to this point.
Exactly, and it's been dormant, and it kind of, you know, goes by the wayside, you know, no activity and things, but I'm changing that.
Yeah, okay.
And so, I'm excited about it.
Good for you. What kind of business you want to have over there?
We wholesale building materials, open to the general public, too, and we've got a hardware store that's developing into it, showroom, and mobile home parts, anything you can imagine, that's an innovative thing, so we focus on value.
Okay, very good.
You said between what two streets, I'm sorry?
Oh, railroad and Body, also. It's really dark on that, and I appreciate Jamie getting a no littering sign, because I've been trying to clean up there. See, I maintain the lot across the street and lease it from the railroad, and I use that for some parking and stuff, too. But I keep it clean, and the grass, there's no bushes and stuff going on like it's been in the past, so you'll see some paint action going on here soon. So that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, we'll get on it. We can do that. Okay. Okay, the next item is update on the Nash County Retail and Small Business Grant Program. And we have a presentation by Susan Phelps. Susan, would you tell us who you are and your address for the record, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Susan Phelps, 120 West Washington Street, Nashville, North Carolina. Mayor, Council, thanks for having me back. I'm enjoying coming to these meetings and getting involved in the community. I wanted to come back and give an update on the Nash County Small Business and Retail Development Grant Program. I came at the beginning of the summer to tell you about our efforts with recruiting business to the rural parts of the communities in the county, within, outside of the city limits of Rocky Mount, so primarily our smaller municipalities. In August, our Nash County Board of Commissioners approved the Retail and Small Business Development Grant Program to assist new and expanding businesses with development as a reimbursement opportunity for capital infrastructure. This is through a application process and a scoring process that our staff and commissioners are involved in. Yesterday, we actually scored and had a public hearing for our first application, which is from Mr. Jeremy Bell with Bell's Hardware, who's developing in the center of town on Washington Street. And so, our county board did go ahead and unanimously approve funding of $10,000 for the sewer relocation that is to take, that has already taken place on that property, a town of Nashville-owned sewer, with the pending applicant, or the pending approval from the Town of Nashville to match that funding.
I think we worked out an arrangement with Gateway Partnership to use part of the money we give them for that purpose.
And the, I did clarify that our motion from our commissioners is to, that our portion is dependent on the towns' match. That was not a motion made for the Gateways match, so that's something where we would have to take that back to the drawing board and see where we end up.
Okay, well, we get a different opinion from the Gateway group, so we'll see where it goes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item is consideration of the street, the special events application for the Children's Christmas Parade sponsored by the Nashville Chamber of Commerce, which you find in your section under 4B, if I can lay my hands on it. This went through the public hearing section last Wednesday night, and there's no problems with it, so we did modify the range of the street from Barnes Street to Alston Street. Does Chair here most approve this consideration?
Second.
It's been moved to second, we approve this consideration. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? It is done. Item C is consideration of special use 2018-01, special use request to allow a pile-on sign totaling 50 feet in overall height located on the property at 104 East Evans Drive. The property is on B1, General Business District, has identified as parcel number 308114432221. This was the issue that the Planning Board heard last week about the sign down at Burger King, and after much discussion, they unanimously approved to, uh, to not approve it, based on the fact that it did not appear to have any deleterious effect on the business of the company. Does the Chair here most approve this consideration, with the recommendation of the Planning
To approve the recommendation to...
Deny, deny.
Not go with the 50-foot sign. So made.
Believe me, 30, not 50.
Right.
Right.
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved, and is there a second?
I seconded it.
And seconded. Is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Okay, it is passed. You'll notify the solicitors, Mr. Manager. Item D is consideration of additional handicap parking on Washington Street. This goes back to the discussion we had on Wednesday night, where the county commissioners wanted to get some more handicap parking places in front of the courthouse, and we talked about that plan last Wednesday night, at a previous meeting, and we decided to, it could be done. We've got to pass, we've got to amend one ordinance we have. You remember, the Sheriff Department asked for designated play site in front, and we gave him one by ordinance, so now we've got to move him over also by ordinance, and then the handicap things, we can put those in at any time. And the ordinance we've got created now, it's been revised from the one that you got originally, because the first one did not have a point of reference on it, so we've added this in. This is ordinance amendment 2018-07, and ordinance amended the text of the Town of Nashville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 4, Parking. Whereas the Town of Nashville has ordinances regulating parking in downtown Nashville, and whereas the Nashville Town Council desires to relocate a single parking space reserved for the Nash County Sheriff's Office on West Washington Street, or to create additional handicap parking, and therefore be able ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Nashville that the Town of Nashville Code of Ordinances be amended to reflect the following changes in Chapter 36, Parking, Article 4, Parking prohibited on certain streets at certain times, Section 36, 112B6, by amending, uh, Nash County Sheriff's Office Mark Patrol Parking, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, single parking space facing north, two spaces to the immediate left of the mark, no parking zone for a fire hydrant located in front of the Nash County Courthouse. And that should solve all of our problems, I would think. Does Chair here most approve the ordinance?
Second.
Yes, it's been moved to second, we approve the ordinance. Is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Accordingly, it is done. You will notify the sheriff. I'll call the commissioners, tell them we got it approved. Okay, the next item is consideration municipal service district Christmas declaration purchase. Then the following that is a presentation of consideration of Christmas wreath improvements that Jamie wants to do, and I think we need to do F before we do E, as one sort of precedes the other. Jamie, where are you? I can't see, I can't see half the room, because, well, there's two posts lined up out there. I wish we had...
I'm concerned with the fact that we've got a camera crew over here, pulling out the place to reuse. I'm going to put electricity on it, so you guys can get to put the...
I think it might be easier to move.
(inaudible) what about your electricity? You can employ it for a second, yeah?
It's going to be easier to move.
Let me tell you what we got first.
Yeah, yeah, let's do it that way. Come through the mic, so we get you recorded.
Okay.
I'm Jamie Baines, Director of Public Works down in Nashville. What we wanted to do, I know you all are aware, that we increased funding in our Christmas decorations line item to spruce up existing wreaths. This is not the municipal service district, it's the ones that lie without, outside of that area. The examples that I brought, the one on the left is one of the existing wreaths. This is probably one of our better examples. A lot of them are in a lot worse shape. So, anyway, the one on the left has 38 C7 or 7-watt bulbs, and three 25-watt bulbs, which is around 340 watts. The example on the right has been retrofitted with new garland and LED lighting. The total wattage on it is 16.7 watts, so you can see the savings.
Jamie, is the one on the left some kind of holly, and the one on the right some kind of like fir?
The one on the right is a mixture of fir and pine. The one on the left, I'm really not sure what that's considered.
Okay.
It's dark green with a white frosting on it. I don't, I don't know what you would really consider that. The one on the left has a plastic boat, and at once upon a time, all of them had a lot of the red berries on them, but there's very few of those that remain.
Were those ribbons at one time more red than they are now, just faded out with time?
Yeah, they faded, and like I say, that's probably one of the better examples. Most of them look pink.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I brought two examples of both colors. I kind of, it doesn't really matter to me, but the one, the deeper red seems to match that color of green to me a little bit more, but I mean, I'm up, that's up to you guys, what we would want to choose.
So what you're proposing then is the, the third ribbon you have there on the, on the blackboard?
Yes. The one that's on, actually on the furthest reef to the right.
Okay, put those on the faded-out ones?
No, putting that, we're talking about completely replacing all of the, all of the wreaths, retrofitting all of the wreaths with the one on the right.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
We're still using the frame, just like the one on the left has, it's the exact same frame and everything as that one, we're just retrofitting it, when you like bulbs and garland and bows.
Jamie, are you doing the retrofitting, or are you sending it off?
We're doing it in-house.
In-house.
Yes.
Yeah, how much does it cost, Mr. Duke?
It's, it's about $162 per wreath.
Per wreath?
We had checked before with, um, Moscow, and they could do it, we had some, he never did quote me yet, on shipping or whatever, which we didn't get that far, because to, in order for them to retrofit them, just like the ones that we've got, is $275 a unit.
Now, I know...
You plan to retrofit all of our existing wreaths?
Thirty, 37 of them, yes.
To look like that?
That's right.
I think you did a great job.
What's, what's involved in retrofitting? You have to rewire them, or just change bulbs, or?
Just, we have to take all of the garland completely off, cut everything off, the, the, the seven light bulbs all have to come off, and then there's a band of garland that goes on the inside of the wreath. You lay your bulbs around outside of that, and then you come back with a socket band of garland on outside of the bulbs.
Okay.
Now, as far as longevity, how long would you think that the new ones would last?
I tried to, tried to research the garland and find out some information like that. It is a good, high-quality exterior garland. I really don't have a great answer for you on that, I really don't. Our plans have been to, when we've got a lot by the way of stored them, than they have been stored in the past, that's been a big problem, and then before we store them and take them back out, we plan to Scotch guard them.
Okay, thanks. Well, I think they look fantastic.
And hopefully, we'll get a lot more service out of them.
Looks really good.
The bows, we're probably not as going to get as, as long of use out of the bows that we got, as we did with the plastic ones, because they're plastic, but they, they look a lot better, and the bows are kind of inexpensive. The plastic bows are, are real expensive. They're $58 apiece, and it takes two per unit, so...
Now, on the one that you retrofitted, that is not a plastic boat?
No, that's an, it's an outside felt.
Like a felt?
It's an exterior, but I don't, I'm expecting probably maybe three seasons at most, and we'd have to redo the bows.
And what's the cost of that boat, just for the boat?
I actually bought those. I found out that I can get ribbon, the same type ribbon, and tie them a lot less, a whole lot less. It's $21 a bow for those, so...
The dollar store has already tied for a buck.
Yeah. The size, I know that when they're up on the pole, they really don't look as big as they are right there, and the bows, you know, that's a two-foot, a four-foot bow, and you really don't see that in retail stores much at all.
Yeah.
It's a bigger bow, so...
Do you have them powered up tonight, or see you got cords on?
I do, if, uh...
If we can borrow them, just depending on...
Y'all both on the same power source? Oh, very nice, very nice. It seems like your candles are much brighter than the lights in the garland, and the one on the left seemed to have a different tint of light.
The only thing does change your tone just a little bit on it?
The one on the right, though, has got comparable tint. Very nice, very nice.
And it's kind of blinding if you look at the candelabras on the one on the right, if you're staring at it now, but keep in mind, they are 20 foot up on the pole, so it makes a big difference.
That's right, and we're only going to see them about 10 seconds as we go by.
That's right, that's right.
Get that switch back there. And the one on the left has twice as many bulbs on it?
The one on the left actually's got 38 bulbs, the one on the right has 50 bulbs.
Fifty?
Yeah, 50. It's just that the one on the left is an incandescent bulb, and the one on the right are LED.
I guess the angle I'm sitting at's...
Yeah, the angle kind of makes a difference.
Okay.
I thought you got another missing part.
See, I'm missing part.
Or are they double lights?
I think, too, the garland on the right is so much thicker and more dense than the one on the left.
Yeah, it's thicker.
So covers them.
And we're looking at it at an angle.
But the one on the left, Jamie, is the one that's existing, that's... That's what we have right now. That's what you've got right now, and that's the better example of what you've got right now. I just brought an example for comparison. Yeah. Less wear and tear on it than some of the others you've got in storage right there. Yeah, that's probably one of the better examples of what we've got that's existing. And I did want to mention, too, that my price per unit is an average, a lot of existing wreaths do not have the candelabra. So... So you would add those? That's not including adding, we still have wreaths that don't have the candelabras. They'll just be a simple wreath without candelabras. Just like we have... Lights, lights in the green, but no, no candelabra. And bows.
Now, the candelabra, the one on the right, we're using the, our existing candelabra, that's not new.
That's not new.
That's not new.
That's the exact wreath that we've got on the left, has just been retrofitted.
Just been retrofitted.
But we do have some that do not have candelabras.
How much would the candelabras cost to retrofit some of those that we don't have?
I don't know if that's available, I'll be glad to research that.
So let me see if I understand this, one of the lefts are the ones we have now, and one of the rights, or, right is a purchase?
That's just purchased material to retrofit.
Okay, okay.
But we had budgeted $6,000, and from what, I've cut it right down to the core, we're $5,994.
Okay, 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 well, what's, what's the wish of the council? Here a motion, we go with Jamie's plan?
I said, go forward, the one on the right.
The one on the right, okay.
That's my opinion.
Is that a motion?
I agree.
Oh, you want it in a motion?
Well, you can have a motion, spend money.
All right. Well, I move on.
I'm just one more time.
Yeah, go ahead.
I still need the members on the bows, too.
Well...
Which bow do you use?
Oh, I make a motion that would go along with Jamie's retrofitting, as we see it here, with the bows, lights, and all.
On the right, okay.
On the right.
Second, yeah.
Okay, if it's been moved to second, we go with the plan on the right. Any discussion? Okay, if there being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Okay, we're on our way. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
I think you did a great job, Jamie.
Okay, the next item is consideration municipal service district, mutual service district Christmas decoration purchase. Kate, are you going to cover that? Who's going to cover that for us?
I'm sorry, I just missed what you had said.
I'm sorry. Item number E, somebody needs to make a presentation about municipal service district stuff.
Do you want Terry, do you want me? I, I think that Julie is going to make that presentation, yes. Ms. Briggs?
Me, hello.
Oh, Julie, okay, Julie, Julie, okay. I couldn't hear what you were saying.
Good evening.
Okay, Julie, your own.
All right, so for the MSD Christmas lights, in your packet, you have listed several options, and you have an option to move forward with purchasing one style of lights, which was the poinsettia that was hung out in front of the Providence Bank last week. Mosque came down, and we hung it up for two days, so that it could be seen by the general public after the public hearing, that was a request, so that they could see what that would look like. So option one is to order enough for every pole in Washington Street from Barnes to Alston, which is CVS, to have those poinsettias in the MSD. Option two is to mix it up with two different styles, one being the poinsettia, which we did see, and the fantasy tree, which we did not see. The fantasy tree is a four and a half by eight-foot tinsel lit with LED lights, they are colored lights, so it's a little bit larger. The poinsettia is about four and a half feet by five feet, so it would be a little bit larger. Option three is to order just enough poinsettias to mix on the poles with what we have that is existing, the existing banners we have, the holiday banners that we have that say "Happy Holidays, Town of Nashville," with the vinyl banner and the wreath candelabra mixture that we, it's a vinyl-printed banner that looks kind of similar to the wreaths that we have hanging up. So we would alternate banner and wreath, and poinsettia. And then, option four is to wait, hang and use what we have, a mixture of the lights that we have from last year, the mixture of the banners that we have, and then get a little bit more input, look at other design companies, and wait for the discount again, because at this point, we have missed the 20% discount, we were down to a 15% discount, so I'm sure we can work out something still with the discount, but if we wanted to wait, there is the option for to wait until next year, carry it over into spring, and we can continue talking to citizens, we can continue doing surveys, and make sure we're spending the money on something that the citizens are going to like, because there is still a lot of dissent on whether they want the tinsel, whether they want something more classic, more traditional, so there is still a lot of opinions that could be considered. However, the board could make a decision tonight. The final deadline for ordering is October 8th, which is next week, so we would have to have that order in relatively soon. So tonight, your option would be to approve the use of the MSD funds to purchase either one design, two designs, or one design, and use what we have, or to wait until next year.
Well, okay, waiting does not seem to be a good, good option. What's your opinion of the council? Option one, option two, option three?
I think...
I'm in favor of option one myself.
Okay.
I think option one sets us up for committing only to the poinsettia, which I agree with Ms. Briggs, that I think there is still some dissent as to whether or not that fits the definition of classic for our downtown. I would prefer the option three, so we make those who like the poinsettia happy, we get the 16, we can go every other pole from CVS down to Barnes Street, and then we can fill it with the banners in between that we already have, and that way, that can buy us some time until next year, and then if we wanted to go with something that's a little bit more traditional, like what Jamie has done with the wreaths, or the wrapping of the pole with that same material with the bow, that would still fit nicely with the poinsettia.
Okay.
So you're saying just go every other pole?
Right, just so we don't have a 100% commitment to decorations that we're not 100% positive about.
Well, the only reason, the only reason I say I'd like to go with one, because if you go with one, you go ahead and you're making a decision, and you're going on with it. I don't care if we wait till next year or five years down the road, we're not going to satisfy everybody in town.
It's true.
You know?
It's true. But if everyone loves the poinsettia, and it looks great, then we can all always come back and order the next 16 next year.
Yeah, yeah, the option, option three does give you latitude...
Right.
...to rethink.
What kind of feedback have we gotten from the public? I had one person to call on me and say that they liked the poinsettia, one person. I was wondering what kind of feedback you got.
Hi, Dad, any? The only feedback I got, some of my observations, and I thought it was okay, just the red lights were too dark. Of course, somebody's just been looking at, because they were owning it off anyway when I was looking at it, somebody's got it with a little power or something. But if you brighten up the red, the poinsettia's okay.
I'm going to solicit information from the people who are here. Cindy, have you had much feedback?
Well, some, and I mean, I think the majority liked it. Some of them did not, and like I said, you're never going to please everybody. I like the idea more traditional, but that's me, and, you know, I know they want something that they can see during the day, and it looks good at night, so, I mean...
Joanne at the graphic, have you heard feedback?
Not as much as I would have thought, but most of the feedback I heard was that meaning that line, where there was a mixture of people wanting more traditional, and what the definition of traditional was for them. People who grew up in the 60s and 70s have one idea of traditional, as in, another idea is more of the wreath, so there's just a difference in opinion of what traditional is for Nashville. I think there is still a division on what we define as traditional.
Okay, we've got, the council's got to make a decision, we've had two proposals, between option one and option three. Based on what we got going at this point, how many of the council are in favor of option one? One? How many are in favor of option three? One, two, three, okay. All right, does Chair here most approve option three?
Second.
It's been moved, and?
Second.
Second, now we approve option three. Is there any discussion? Okay, if there being none, all in favor of indicating, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Okay, option three it is, you can start your, start your things in motion now to get, get it done.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, let me go back to the front here. Okay, item G is consideration request for pet food for fines event. Emily, would you like to come up and make that presentation for us, please?
Do you need my name and address?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I'm Emily Endrally, I'm at 206 Clements Drive in Pikeville, North Carolina, 27863.
And you are?
Hmm?
And you are?
And I am the library director here at the Cooley Library.
That's what we need, thank you.
Okay. Each year, the Nash County Animal Shelter provides care for about 2,000 animals that have been dropped off. They've been victims of abuse, or they've been caught in the wild. And we would just like to help them out by offering a pet food for fines event, where people could come in and donate an item of food for the pets. Each item would count as $1 off of their fines. And it's a way to give back to the community and also to celebrate the Adopt a Shelter Dog Month, and also celebrate Make a Difference Day. The shelter is closed on Make a Difference Day, so our event would stop the day before. So it would run from October 15th to October 26th. We did a food for fines event in April, and that resulted in about $270 worth of fines being waived. And, but that, we collected about $400 to $500 worth of food for my sister's house. We got a lot of positive feedback from the community. They really liked that in addition to clearing out their fines, they were also able to see that they were helping others in the community. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is Chair motion, will approve the pet food for fines events for the library?
Some of.
It's been moved, and second, we approve the, the pet food for fines event, which I think is a very cool idea. Is any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Sorry?
Uh, how, how do we do as far as fines? What about level of fines now after we did the first one? We still gotta have?
We do, it stays about, it stays pretty constant. A lot of those fines were from old accounts that we're working on getting out of the system, because these people have moved on. We have no way of finding them. So, and then also, when I gave the amount of fines that were due at that meeting a few months ago, I forgot to mention that a large part of that is actually lost item fees, not overdue fines. So our overdue fine level is much smaller than the, I think it was 21,000 that I mentioned. And the pet food for fines would not go towards lost items. People are still responsible for replacing the lost items.
We have any repeat offenders?
Yes.
I like what you're doing, but I think we need to address the repeat offenders, too.
We are, we're working with them.
Take advantage of you.
Yes.
It's called recidivism. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is any discussion? See, there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Accordingly, it is done. Okay, town managers report. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I lost it in my glasses. These, these progressive things are crazy. Okay, I don't know, A's discussion of request for perpetual care for the options. We've had a number of questions asked from people about how does this work so that, by permanent fees? We've got this annual 30-year thing, some people want to pay later, and they, we thought this thing out, and what we have done is come up with a plan that the council will consider, which you have read. The, the two sensible things of the, of the argument is that there are two options that the council should wish to, to proceed with. Option number one is for a person to pay a one-time perpetual fee, which is currently $314 per grave site, in lieu of the $30 per grave site annual cemetery fee. Or offer the option to persons to pay a one-time perpetual care fee, which is currently $314 per grave site, but give a 30-year, a $30 credit per year for five years, for a total of $150 towards this cost. This credit would be only given to those owners who have paid the annual cemetery upkeep fee for at least five years. So the total fee with the credit would only be $160 per grave site. Also, should the council wish to proceed with this, Public Works Director recommends we leave this option open without an end date for anybody who wants to participate in this thing. You know, we did something like this a while back, we had a temporary date on it, but we wanna make the thing permanent now.
Don't we need to clarify the fact that if a person purchases a grave site today, that that $314 fee is worked into the price?
That is correct.
That is correct. Yes, that is correct. If you buy the lot, wherever it is, it's $314 added to that for, for permanent fee. This gives those persons who've been at it for years a chance to, to get into permanent fee program, and gives them credit for $150 for, for five years of payments.
And also, some of the terminology, like a grave site, it can be a single, it can be two, three, I mean, not three, but four, eight.
Now, the grave plot is the number of graves you've got, two, four, six, eight, or 10. The site, as we say, is one single grave.
No, that's not the way it is in our...
That's the way I, that's the way I read it.
A grave site can have two, four, or eight.
And the 314 covers...
A space, okay, so using space instead of site, okay.
Covers site.
Right.
Space.
Space.
So if you've got a four, four grave site, it's three, four, ten, four, ten.
Perpetual care grave site, not space.
That needs to change.
Site would be, we've got to get the terminology straight before we get, you know, decide anything.
Jamie, could I ask you to come to the front minute, please? Ms. Hinton's reading from the fee schedule, but it is per space, not... Or do you recall how it was set up?
Define space in, in site.
Know when our terminology says space, it's site or lot or...
I don't have it in front of me, and I really, it does want taking a look at. We need to be clear on it before we do what, yes.
Yeah.
Because right here, it says, a perpetual care grave site, $314.
Right.
A site can be one, it can be two, four, or eight.
Right, right.
We need to clarify that, I guess.
So here, here motion, we table this for one, for one month until we get the definition right.
We table this.
Okay, we gotta move to table this for 30 days till we get our nomenclature correct.
Second.
And it's been second, is any discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Okay, we're working in that direction. All right, Pete, it's your turn.
Part of the management reports, there was an administrative budget amendment, which is in front of you there, with Parks and Recreation, they bought a mower. Thank you. Thank, Miss Rabe. Uh, the budget amendment for Parks and Recreation was a mower, wasn't it, Marguerite?
Yes, sir.
And they were able to buy that at less than the budgeted amount, but had a need for things like backpack. Actually, the description is in the memo to you in the back, on the very last page of your agenda. The request to purchase a lawnmower, not sacrificing quality for less than the $8,500 that was leftover money, be spent for a weed eater, backpack blower, chainsaw, and a pull behind sprayer. With the additional manpower that we've got out there now, it gives both of those guys the additional equipment that they need to work side by side with the weed eaters and chainsaws, and, or go in two different directions at one time and not have to share that old equipment that they had, and now gives them a duplicate if one goes down. So we were able to stay totally within the budget, but by using the total of the $8,500 that was, that was available there. So that was, Finance Director and I talked about it and talked with Marguerite, and she was able to get all that within the dollars that were allocated to her in the budget. Next for you is our garbage trucks, just kind of an update on some things here. Garbage trucks still to or down for repair. We thought we had the 2010 back online yesterday, and they started to bring it back from Wilson, and the engine light came back on, and they took it right back to Mangumstown and Wilson to see what's going on there. So we are gracious enough to, or fortunate enough to have the, still using the truck that was graciously loaned to us from the City of Rocky Mount, and we are covering that with insurance. That's the only cost that we have, plus fuel, obvious operating costs there, but there's no rent or anything on that. I put a copy of a memo from Jamie at your places tonight with his recommendations on how we might proceed to acquire a backup truck, because that 2004 model is not worth fixing because of its age and repair costs are probably more than the truck is worth. So he's come up with some options there for you to consider. When we finally do get the 2010 back in service as a backup, using potential of buying a used, what we call rear packer truck, it's one that you would load from the rear of the truck, and it would help with his bulk items that he has to pick up now on a weekly basis. And then also, during storm damage, that you can load those from the rear. And, but when the side loader goes down, you can empty the carts into the back of this truck. So that's the reason it would act as a backup to, if we had a truck out. So you could read that memo and see his recommendations there, and hopefully, there'd be some budget savings for us and get us to fiscal year 2020, I believe it is, where you would be buying the new truck, or replacing the 2010 truck. The audit status, nothing new here. All the financial records for the period ending June 30th have been turned over to the Mayan place, our auditors. We're, from time to time, get a few questions from them, but everything seems to be in order there. There, all the thing we're waiting for is the actuarial analysis that we have to run, it's required by law, for the six retired employees who are not part of the state health plan. This is currently underway, but may take until mid-November to complete due to the company's heavy workload for this type of service. The new fire truck is due for delivery early next week. Three of our fire department employees went to the Pierce Manufacturing Plant in Appleton, Wisconsin, a couple of weeks ago, and inspected the truck before it left, it was to leave the plant for delivery to Nashville. And I've put, scattered some pictures around that you can see what the truck looks like there. At your place, between you and Kay, there's Louise, and then there was one over here between Charles and Larry, and then the mayor's got one here himself. So you can kind of see what, before it gets here, but it's, it's due, we thought it was gonna be this Wednesday or Thursday, but actually, it's gonna, they didn't have enough drivers to get them, get all their trucks delivered out to everybody they had promised. So we'll get ours next Monday or Tuesday, Chris was saying, so... As you're well aware, we survived the hurricane without any major issues. Chief Joiner kept me informed about what was happening here in Nashville. The fire and police and Public Works crews did a great job keeping a check on some of our trouble spots around town and making sure everyone was safe. A pre-hurricane meeting, I think Councilmember Taylor, Larry Taylor, mentioned it this at our public hearing the other night, that that pre-hurricane meeting was held with some of the residents of some of those worst flood potential areas. Residents were reminded not to wait too long before they evacuated their neighborhood if the waters began to rise. Some of the residents didn't take a chance and left their homes for the emergency shelters when the storm began to hit this area. So that early warning system seemed to work out for everybody. Luckily, knock on wood, we didn't have any, any major issues and major flooding. Finally, hopefully for next month's meeting, I'm looking at some possible revisions or clarifications in the utility policy guidelines, and hope to have those to you at the next week's meeting, next month's meeting, for your consideration and approval. Melanie Burns, or Brian, excuse me, and I have some ideas that we think would make things more customer-friendly and clear for both the customer and the employees administering the policy. So hopefully, we'll get those out to you in time enough to read, but we're trying to tweak those a little bit and make it more customer-friendly and easier to administer.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. And at last week's meeting, when we spoke about the hurricane and all the preparedness, and I thanked the fire department and the police department, I was remiss in not thanking Public Works. I saw those guys out there every single day, cleaning all of the storm grates, picking up debris from, from dawn until dusk, and they did a wonderful, wonderful job. So Jamie, if you could just pass that on to all of your guys, and then everyone else who's in the crowd as well, if you could pass it on to your crews, I'd really appreciate it. So thanks again for all the preparation. And thank you, everyone, for your patience with the Christmas decorations. We do appreciate that as well, that's it.
I thank Jamie and Chris and Tom and Joey and Steve and all the people who took care of us during the storm. We were very fortunate. Sadly, one of our longtime residents of Nashville, E.T. Bass, passed away on the 30th of September. He was very loyal, he attended many of our meetings. He had some health issues that kept him away for the last few years. But just to let you know, he lived right behind the town hall. And anyway, we will miss him.
Mr. Taylor? No comment. Mr. Taylor?
I just wanted to echo what Ms. Hinton and Kate has already done. Thanks once again to our public, Public Works Department, Fire Department, and the Police Department. Those guys came up not, not from, not being directed from us, but they kept, they took it upon themselves to hold that meeting the other week before the storm, and you guys are to be commended for that. It worked, a lot of people took that advice and made some, some safe moves, rather than be safely sorry. We were very fortunate when that storm turned. But let me tell you, people, I went down to Wilmington just like the other day, and the college down there, you still cannot get on campus because of what, the way they got struck. So we, people use the term, we dodged a bullet. No, we were blessed that it didn't, didn't come our way. But let's, let's always be prepared, stay prepared, because it's sad to say, but one day, people, we gonna get hit. You know, just like we got flooded the other year with, was it Fran?
Matthew.
Matthew, no, no, a couple of years ago, with everything on that, in Florida.
Floyd.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got hit with Floyd real, real hard. So, you know, we, as they say, we dodged a bullet this time, but you guys worked hard, did some long hours to, to be out there. But if we hadn't have got the word out, and the water would have risen, we'd have had a whole lot of grief on our hands. So you guys are to be commended, let your people know that we appreciate what they did. And, and once again, I appreciate it, looking out, seeing the people that are in the audience. It, it feels good when you sit up here and you're not talking to your department heads, because a lot of time, we just have leaders in here, and we look out, and the only thing we got is department heads. So I think you should be proud of yourself for being here, because you hear what goes on firsthand. So stay involved. That's it, ladies.
There's one last thing I forgot to mention. Parks and Rec is hosting a public forum on October 10th from 5:30 to 7:30, right here in council chambers. And we really hope that the community will come out, whether you use the park facilities, want to use the park facilities, if there's something that you want to see in the town of Nashville, please come out, give the advisory board your recommendations, your requests, so that everything can be considered for the master plan. Yes, October 10th, 5:30 to 7:30. That's it.
That's it. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I mentioned this before, but I particularly want to thank the police and fire department for all the work they did during the storm, particularly going out identifying people as special needs, because I ran into that problem during that last storm we had, people without power in some parts of town for a long time, people's emergency power was going down on them, folks like insulin machines and all that, so we got all those folks identified. But we did dodge a bullet, but sooner or later, it's gonna come back to us. The really extra good news, of course, is that Burger King is now open. And for all of those of you who solicited to me when, it's now going full blast. I went down this afternoon and sopped up a whop- I went down this afternoon and sopped up a Whopper. That is as good as the last one I remembered. So, you may have to stand in line or park in the street, but it, she's open and going. Okay, thank you very much and we'll see you next time we're together and the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second, we adjourn, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Oppose no? We're adjourned.